And your mics, please.
We're at the starting line of a race or something.
We are.
You're live.
Live. All right, we're gonna call the order of the meeting for Board of Selectmen at 6:31. May all please join us in the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us. Nobody indicated that there was gonna be any public comment, so I'll move to the warrants. And I'll make a motion to approve payroll warrant 2337 in the amount of $189,647.28.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Three yes, two absent. I'll make a motion for bill warrant 2337 in the amount of $586,918.57, which breaks down to the town of $139,302.89. Water and sewer, $12,467.95. Payroll withholding, $31,717.43. Light bills, $178,783.27. Grants and revolving, $107,361.3. And Whittier Assessment, $117,286.
And I'm gonna second that, and because there's only three of us, I work at Whittier, I think everyone's aware of that, I'm gonna vote for the assessment inside of those. So we have three votes to pass it. Rule of necessity.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Three yes, two absent. Gonna move to the approval of the minutes. And was there a meeting that you said you weren't at?
No, that was in February.
February, so all good for all three of these?
Yep.
So I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we approve the Selectmen meeting minutes for January 3rd, 17th, and 30th. Unless anybody has any objections to any of them.
No, I'll second that.
All right, all in favor? Three yes, two absence. We have an appointment for John Gray for the Historic Commission. He wrote us a letter.
Yes, and we also received approval from Claire Walsh, the Historic Commission Chair. She just did not have time to write a recommendation letter, but I do have an email from her definitely recommending him to be appointed and also thanking him for volunteering.
Perfect.
So I'll make a motion to appoint John Gray of 90 School Street to the Historic Commission effective March 13th, 2023 to June 30th, 2023.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Three in favor, two absence. We have a request from Jeff and Maria to... What's the, what's the actual wording?
You gave us a lot of letters on this thing, I don't know if we'll be able to explain it.
An exemption from their special permit for two days.
So it's not necessarily the special permit, they receive zoning board of approval, zoning board of appeals approval to extend their hours on a special event that they hold in July and August. It's an all-nighter event, and they like to extend their hours to 2:00 a.m. They've done so in the past, and in the past, the Board of Selectmen have also required them to come before them because they have a common BIC license that states their hours of operation. So it would also be temporary relief or a common BIC license for those two occasions, both one in July and both one in, sorry, and one in August.
Which have already gone before the Board of Appeals, and the Board of Appeals have approved it. Anybody have any questions?
No, it's just, I, they, they used to come before us, now we're just gonna do it like in one swoop for two nights.
So they, last year, they tried to do the event, and what happened is they didn't realize that it was a two-step process because they have varying licenses, so they weren't able to pull off the event at the last minute. So we encouraged the owner to try and be proactive, and so he went before the zoning board of appeals to get the temporary relief, and then when he was getting his common BIC license, said, "Oh, and I, and I got my approval for the all-nighter," and I was like, "No, no, we still have one more approval." So he has to be on the upcoming agenda since their opening in March. Technically, it won't affect his normal operation, but yes, it's just for those two events, and the dates have not been set, so it's one night in July and one night in August.
Okay, so if we vote now, do we have to vote again when he picks a night, or are we all set?
All set.
No, the nights have been picked, right?
There's no dates in here?
Yeah, it just says one day in July.
Oh, one day in July.
Yes.
Doesn't say the exact dates, but...
Yeah, I don't think, we need to re-vote that, revisit that, if we approve it.
So we're allowing, we're voting to extend the hours for one day in July and one day in August, and the extension is from 10:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. for a special late-nighter event. Each, oh, this goes every single year until 2026?
So the zoning board of appeals allowed relief from their special permit for the next few years. The Board of Selectmen does not have to extend the same relief, and I wouldn't suggest so because the common BIC license that they seek from us is an annual license. So I would say that it should be on an annual basis.
So we'll change the motion to be for the special late-nighter event for 2023.
Yeah, if I remember, Jason, on the zoning board, I think it was only to have them come in, in for just that, you know, because their thing was, you know, for three years.
Yeah, so the zoning board will be taken care of for three years, and then they'll come back here every year.
Okay, so that would be my motion.
All right, I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Three in favor, two absent.
So I know where our chairman is, but where is Selectman McDonald? Does he come in tonight?
He does plan to attend, he is at an event with his son and should be at the meeting closer to 7:00.
Okay, thank you.
And we have a request to add a streetlight on Main Street across from the entrance at Penn Tucket Middle High School, pole 149.
So that was a request by the general manager over at the Groveland Municipal Light, and so there's just poor lighting in that area, and they would like to add a streetlight, and that is under the authority of the Board of Selectmen.
So that came from our...
Kevin Snow, yes.
Light department.
It did.
Awesome.
So we're gonna say yes?
Well, I wouldn't have a problem with that. Anybody else have a problem with that?
We'll make a motion to add a streetlight to pole number...
It's 149.
149.
149. As requested by the Groveland Electric Department.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Three in favor, two absent. And this is a vote to sign the GHA 2023 capital funds form.
Yes, the Groveland Housing Authority had requested that we sign off on their capital funds form. It's one of the projects that was listed as part of the original plan that the board approved a few months ago, and this specific project is for the closets, so they're just looking for the town to sign off on that form.
I don't know that I saw that. I have the audit in my packet, but it would have come, it would have been before the audit, right?
It should be in there.
I saw it with Jaffa Marie's. And then it goes to the audit. Thanks, sorry.
These are the funds that are already set aside.
That's correct.
Is there any rush to, to get this done tonight? I mean, I don't really know what this is for, at all.
It's just part of their original allocation for their capital funds. I mean, I guess we can wait until the next meeting, which would be the 27th, so I can get them to put together a more detailed explanation, but it's for pole cords and closet doors over at the Housing Authority.
We already voted on something for them, right? With water filters, is this part of that? I mean, it'd be nice to know how, what this, they just want us to rubber stamp it, but I don't really know what this is.
It's part of their capital plan, but we can wait until the next meeting.
Would that be all right? I just don't know what this is for specifically at all.
That's fine with me, that's what...
Make a motion, table.
I'll second that.
All right, no further discussion, all in favor? Three in favor, two absence. And now we'll have a presentation from the Powers and Sullivan LLC for our audit, are they here?
Uh-huh, I saw him outside.
I think he's outside, been walking back and forth.
I'm reading.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Let us know when we're ready to go, and we'll, we'll get started.
Ready when you are.
All right, so we are ready. So for the record, my name is Michael Nelligan, I'm a partner with Powers and Sullivan. My associate is Laura Stone, she's a manager with us, and we've both been involved with the audit of the town for a number of years. And asking Laura about this year, she told me that this is probably the cleanest the books have ever been, and the audit went very smoothly. So we did our planning and testing and transaction work in the first week of, or second week of June. We did our phase three year-end field work the first week of December, and we issued draft reports on January 12th, and management looked at those for a few weeks, went back and forth on a couple of things, and we issued the finals on February 14th of this year. So they've been issued, they're all set, and they're done. Now, the only thing that we have left to do is for the single audit, this was the first time you qualified for a single audit this year, because your expenditures were over $750,000. Because the majority of that was Opera funds, the government treasury came up with a special alternative reporting methodology that we implemented, but they have not given us the complete final guidelines on how to report that. So we should have that, it was supposed to come on Friday, it should be in this week, and it's just a matter of uploading this two-page report that says that we looked at your Opera expenditures and found no issues with them. So because you were under the $10 million, you qualified for lost revenue on all of that, so all you really have to do is spend that money on any governmental services, and you're fine. So there's no issues with that, but it's still out there, I just wanted to let you know that. So they sent over these guidelines, but they're not 100% complete, so hopefully we'll have the answer for that by the end of the week. And we may have to go on your portal and help you upload that report, and I think that's really all it's going to be. So pretty simple. So again, the audit went very smoothly this year, we had no issues with, with anyone. We had full cooperation from all the departments that we visited. We had no adjustments to your financial statements other than what we call the normal gap accrual entries to convert your modified cash accounting to full accrual for financial statement reporting purposes, and so that involves your fixed assets, your long-term liabilities for debt, and compensated absences, your OPEB liability, your pension liability, and those things. But your foundational ledgers, we made no adjustments to. So that's a testament to the way the books are being kept, and they're in good shape. There were no new GASB statements this year. One of them that was applicable for this year had to do with leases. You don't have any significant leases that go out beyond one year from the financial statement date. You do have about five little leases for properties over at Versi Park, but they're all within one year of the statement date, so you don't have to record those. And the one lease that you had prior to that was on a loader, I think, that was about five years old, and you made your last payment this past year. So we did not have to implement GASB 87, and that was the only new GASB that was applicable for this past year. So we've issued clean audit opinions. If you look at our audit opinion, it's a little different from last year, it's a third page now, and they added, they revised the thing, so the, the, our audit opinion is a boilplate report that the AICPA makes us conform to, so we have to issue that same report on every single audit that we do, and all auditors use the same reports. And they decided to change it again this year after about 10 years. So it's new, if you look at it and compare to last year, it's gonna look a little different, but it says basically the same thing. And I actually like the new wording, because it's a little more clear about what auditor's responsibilities are and management's responsibilities, and I, I think it, it reads a lot better than the old report. So that is, is new, but it, nonetheless, it's a clean audit opinion. No issues were mentioned in that. And I'll just quickly talk about some of the results for the year. You ended the general fund with a balance of $3.3 million. It increased by $287,000 over the last year, and an increase of about $287 is what you planned. That's, that's just about what you balanced your budget with, a little bit of use of free cash and some reserves. So that comes in right within expectations, and on a $21 million budget to have a $287,000 surplus, that's pretty much exactly where you want it to be and what you planned for. That amount, $3.3 million fund balance, represents 16% of general fund expenditures. Rating agencies look for that number to be anywhere from 7% to 15%, so you're just over the top of where they expect, where they want people to be. So you should get favorable ratings from your rating agencies. And that general fund does include two stabilization funds. It's $1,003,000 in the general stabilization fund and $341,000 in the capital stabilization fund. And on a budgetary basis, your revenues came in $439,000 higher than what you budgeted, and expenditures were $318,000 lower than what you budgeted. And you had a little bit of carryover for conferences, I think it was only about $40,000 or so. So long-term debt, you had no long-term debt, new long-term debt for the year, and you paid down $260,000 through the general fund and $250,000 in the water and the sewer fund. You had a new ban, bond anticipation note, $360,000 in the water fund for water main replacements, and $121,000 governmental for highway, police, and fire expenditures. Your pension liability at the end of the year was $8.1 million, and you're a member of the Essex Regional Retirement System, so you really have no control over anything that they do over there. So you don't participate in setting the discount rate or choosing the investments, you just get a bill every year. And it's not gonna be going down anytime soon, I wouldn't think either, but... Your OPEB liability was $5.5 million at the end of the year. You've got $1 million set aside in the OPEB trust fund, so you're 20% funded on that. And for the year, you contributed $205,000 additional above and beyond the pay-as-you-go requirement, and you had a, a loss on the investments because of the economy right now of about $48,000. That's an unrealized loss, so when the economy comes back, that should come back as well. And as I think I mentioned, there were no new, new notes to the financial statements, so they're all pretty much, all the numbers obviously have been updated and everything, but there were no new required notes to the financial statements. So that's pretty much it on this document. I'd be happy to take any questions or comments or anything like that that you might have.
Anybody have any questions? You know? Oh, good. Go ahead.
Go ahead, yeah, so under, and I know this, we covered this before with you, just to kind of understand it a little better. And I know the financial team is trying to track this down, that the difference between the bank balance and the book balance at the Century Bank, and then the unreconciled difference at the Eastern Bank?
Yeah, so those are two, I have those in the management letter.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll just talk about that right now.
Oh, we're not at that yet.
I'll get to it, because what's going on is there's, there's two unreconciled, well, actually, not unreconciled anymore. There were two variances in two of the accounts. The vendor account and the online bill pay account had variances in them, one favorable, one unfavorable. The variances have been worked down to a number that's been consistently showing up in every month's reconciliation since last year about this time. So everybody's pretty confident that they know what the variance is, or at least the amount of the variance. It's not changing any longer like it had been. So everything's being reconciled except that beginning variance that has existed for many years, and the plan is to write those two variances off at the end of this month. So that should be the end of that.
So the, I'm afraid to ask, probably the bigger number is gonna go against it? Of course.
Yes.
And the smaller number is to our benefit, so...
And the bigger number, we talked about, when the adjustment is made, will make it against the beginning balance as if it was, you know, sitting around for a long time, so it's not gonna really impact anything. It will affect free cash.
That's what I was gonna say, it's gonna affect our free cash reconciliation, okay. So we'll see a little bit from that. That, but now that, we're not gonna keep talking about this anymore, you think?
Hopefully not.
Hopefully not, great, that's good news. Okay, and then... I see that our team found an error, but is that gonna just be...
That was, that was a new variance that...
That they found?
That they found.
That we found.
During this past fiscal year.
Team Groveland found that, okay, and that's going to be dealt with at the same time?
At the same time, yeah.
Okay. That's good news. So I jumped ahead on you then, I took it, right?
Okay.
That's fine?
I don't blame you, I would've asked the same question.
Okay. All right, so, since I'm on a roll, this one more topic of the... And I, and I know from when Rebecca was in the position of the town planner, the tax title receivables, I know it includes the Valley Screw Building, and I know it also includes small pieces of property that developers left behind. Do, do you see any end in sight here, like as far as how we can get rid of this stuff?
Yeah, so it's a, I mean, some of it will sit there for forever, until the properties turn over. Some of it has been written off that was deemed to be, you had that one EPA site that you're never gonna get anything on, so that, that I believe has been written off. Was that written off?
It was netted against the deferred, because it was fully deferred, so...
Yeah, okay, so that was...
But it's not yet foreclosed on.
That was taken care of.
Yep.
For, from, for the financial statements. And then the other ones are going through the proper process to become, to be worked through and to take possession if you need to, or to be collected. But at least now, the list is manageable and it's understood by everybody, and now you just have to wait for something to happen with the properties.
And I would say that our treasury collector has been doing a great job at identifying those parcels and going through and learning more about the land of low value and trying to get those off the books, as well as doing some research with our tax title attorney concerning unknown property owners and digging into title research and stuff, so she's been really digging into that list substantially, and I, I feel that the end of next year, we're gonna see a, a lot more of the fruits of that labor, for sure. So we are taking a very active stance on those properties and trying to narrow down that list even further, and Michelle, again, has been doing a great job at that.
Right, I mean, I know it's less than what we saw a year ago. So when, the thing, the properties that we find that we can't get anything from, right? Are we holding overlay money against that, and what, what eventually happens? We just write it off? I mean, how does this just go away? Like the Valley Screw Building, we know, we're not gonna get that money, we're not gonna get the interest on it.
No, in that case, you know, unless the property was sold, or, I mean, that's ultimately what you look for, is the property be sold at some point. And then you have a lien on that property, so you get the money.
Right, it's, I believe because of the EPA, there's so many restrictions on that property.
That is the one I think that we were talking about that was written off against the deferred.
Okay.
So that one shouldn't be a problem going forward. Yeah, so, I mean, but the way that the, the tax liens are booked on the, on the financial statements is they're fully deferred, so they really don't impact anything. You set up a receivable and a deferred revenue against them, so they, they don't really have any impact on your free cash or on your fund-based financial statement.
We just don't want it to go, we want it to go smaller, not larger.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good. And the only, I know that we did the, we did, our town administrator did the financial policies, but I'm wondering, you've mentioned before this formal fraud risk assessment, and then inside you talk about department heads doing it, and, I mean, you know we have really small staff. So how does a town with our staff...
So we've talked about this probably almost, you know, for the last four or five years, since, since this comment was formalized. And I, I can take it out of the report, it's a recommendation that we, we, we gave to all of our clients at one point, and most all of them have implemented it in some fashion. And the way that I would recommend that you implement it here is just to get the department heads to identify anything in their department where they handle cash or vacation time, payroll sign-offs, anything that they could have an impact on that might lend itself to fraud or misstatement, and, and have them identify what those are and what they're doing to monitor those things. So if it's a matter of, if they deal with any cash, just explain what their cash reconciliation process is.
I think we're on that path, because we did do the policies, and we do have a fraud risk policy in there, but when we shared that, they had said that it had to meet a certain standard, and so we had to upgrade that into something a little bit more substantial.
So one is the regular fraud risk, and the other one is a documentation of internal controls over federal grants.
Yes.
That's the one that you haven't done anything with.
Yes.
Fraud risk one is, is, if you tell us that you've met with department heads and they've now have a process to report back to, to you folks about how they're monitoring the risks that they've identified in their department, and if there aren't any, there aren't any, but you do have some departments that have risks in them, because they collect cash, they reconcile their own statements, I don't think you have much of that going on anymore, but there, there are certainly areas of risk in those departments. If the department heads are signing off on, on payroll warrants every week, then they ought to just make a statement to you annually that, "I've signed off on all the payroll warrants that, for my department during the year, and I'm satisfied that everybody's being paid properly." That, that's really all it is, it's just a, a dialogue going back and forth between management and you folks to let you know how, what they're doing, to make sure that their departments are not at risk for fraud or misappropriation of assets.
And having a smaller department and less people make that a little bit easier to do.
Right.
Yeah.
And you mentioned the federal grant is a difference.
The other one is, is implementing a, a set of documents that come close to the, what they call a COSO framework for internal controls. It's, it's a, it's a recommended best practices, and we have a template that we've provided. All you really have to do is, is put it in place.
Laura sent that over, so we had that, we're ready to go, so we're gonna get that up, so...
And again, it's, it's not been a big deal, because you've really never met the threshold for having a single audit until this past year. So that's what it's all about, it's... It's, it's, it's the federal granting agencies, if you were getting significant federal grants, they might ask for you, so there's a, there's a form that you have to sign. When you apply for a federal grant, there's a questionnaire on there. Do you have documented internal, internal control policies and procedures over federal grants? And you need to check that off, yes, or you're not going to get your grant. So you ought to have the policy in place when you check that off. That's, that's really all it is.
Would we be held responsible for the federal grants for the housing authority that we sign off on?
No, that's a separate organization. And most of the grants that you typically see in a city or a town come through the school department anyway. And that's a separate, that's being handled by, by Penn Tucket, so you don't see, see those anyway, for the most part.
That's it for me.
Awesome.
Thank you.
I have a question in regards to the number of accounts. I know that there was a large number of accounts and it was just so many, it was a little concerning. Have you seen a decrease in the number of accounts?
Bank accounts?
Yes.
I didn't notice any real issue with the number of bank accounts. Like we said, everything was reconciled except for, you know, the two accounts that were noted. As long as everything's being reconciled, we didn't notice any, like, you know, significant number of bank accounts or anything that would warrant a concern.
Awesome. That's perfect.
So we get a gold star?
You got a clean audit opinion.
Thank you very much. Well, I think from the board of selectmen, we should write a letter and thank our staff, our financial departments, and our town administrator, and everybody involved with this because certainly we don't do this work. We count on them to do it, so it's always good to get a, a good audit report.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
You know, we've seen a lot of progress in the last couple of years and this year was absolutely the best in a long time.
That's awesome.
So everybody's working, working with the software, which is a good thing, and Vadar is working like it's designed to work and things are good.
Yep.
Awesome. All right, well, thank you very much.
All right, you're very welcome. Thank you for your business, we really appreciate it and hope to see you again next year.
We have the nice weather.
Okay, I hope the rest of the meeting goes well. Thank you very much again.
I'm sure it will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the budget discussion.
So I'm not sure exactly how you want to approach it. We have, well, there's two things that we have before. So we still don't have a budget recommendation from the finance board. They have met with all of the relative departments. I know that there's a few members, the chair and the vice chair here from the finance board if they want to weigh in some more, but they've done their initial assessment, taken a look at everything. And in preparation of tonight's meeting, they have provided a recommendation for what they believe the board of selectmen should put forward for the override. Naturally, that number is going to be contingent upon the budget. And so they're pretty confident in what they're proposing and therefore they're looking at a final number that they would like the board to consider this evening. So I'm not sure if you want to dive into that or to talk a little bit about the meeting that we had with the school committee. I don't know if yourself or Kathy want to weigh in as to how that presentation went on the ninth. But essentially, we received our updated assessment from the Penn Tucket Regional School District. We're looking at a total assessment of thirteen million, seven hundred thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars for fiscal year '24. That does include the capital assessment included in that. So if you remove that, you're looking at closer to eleven million dollars for the, the operating assessment. Overall, I think that the superintendent was pretty clear about what we're experiencing in terms of the aid that was coming from the state. It was not ideal. There was a lot of talk about increases to chapter seventy monies, but that didn't really amount for much when it came to Penn Tucket. I think that if I recall correctly, it was about point five one percent increase in fiscal aid. And then there was also some other negatives such as their funding of special education and regional transportation. Additionally, the state administration had recognized that the increase in the special education cost of fourteen percent is going to be detrimental to many municipalities, and they have not necessarily recommended any relief for that. So they have publicly recognized that it is a problem, but they have not stated what they're going to do about it. So, in my personal opinion, I thought that the meeting was informative. I think it's a lot of the same information that we've heard over and over again. You know, we can argue about the differences in terms of how the school chooses to operate, but I think that the state aid is really something that needs to be taken into consideration. Just like us, they, they don't have revenue being created that they can just take from. They have a select pot of money and those costs have increased substantially. So they're looking at a number that they think is in their best interest and working with the finance board and talking with the departments. We've come up with a recommendation that we think would work for the town. Unfortunately, that's going to mean that we need additional funds from the residents because we get our revenue from property taxes, that's our sole source of revenue. So if we only are taking in a certain amount, we can't take in any more without an override. The town hasn't seen an override in many years. The last favorable override was in 2007. So it has been a long time where the town has been continuing to try and decrease its budget in order to accommodate for the assessment that comes in higher and higher and higher every year. Last year, we saw a big jump, and this year, we're looking at a twelve percent increase over last year's assessment. So it's just not sustainable for the town to continue to cut its services and cut in the expense of its employees, all of what they need in terms of their own wages and/or expenses in order to operate. So I think that the finance board has taken that into consideration, and I don't know, excuse me again, if the chair or the vice chair wants to come up and say a few words, but I think that's kind of what the general idea is. So based upon their initial draft, I think that the override number we're looking at is about one point two million.
Yeah, in terms of what I got from the, the school meeting, when I, when I looked at some of the information that they provided, the chapter seventy funds for Penn Tucket went up, I think, point five one, point five four percent. Triton went up point seven four percent. Newburyport went up twenty percent. And some of the, Georgetown only went up point five nine percent. So some of the smaller places in this area here were very left behind on the increase. I know Senator Tarr is meeting with our representatives and the representatives that cover Triton. I believe he was meeting today to go over those numbers and to discuss what we need to do moving forward to increase those numbers. And I think the big thing is to find out why those numbers are low. Because if they're low because they have a specific reason, then we're not going to be able to get them and increase them. And it's going to fall to the town. And if I'm not mistaken, the special education funds that you speak, or increases that you speak of was out-of-district costs. Where the out-of-district cost typically goes up between one and a half to two and a half percent over the last seven years. And this year here, it went up fourteen point one percent. And if I'm not mistaken, at the end, they added an additional four hundred thousand dollars to our assessment, just that alone, which is just something that, that the town cannot absorb or even come close to absorbing. Those are some of the, the biggest things that impacted our assessment. And so speaking with some of the residents, I learned over the years that they, school had recently dropped from seven languages to three. And I know that the school continues to cut and cut and cut and, just like the town when they continue to underpay the employees over time and time and time again because they don't want to pass those costs on to the residents. And unfortunately now, because it's been such a long time, it's going to have a large impact on the residents moving forward. And it's, it's going to happen one way or another. And I know that the override number here, that's going to be presented before us tonight, is, is going to be a hard number for a lot of people to swallow, but it's, it's a realistic number. And it's a number that's going to bring the school back up to a standard that's still at the bare minimums in terms of safety, liability. They'll have a nurse that actually can cover the school, the recommended nursing staff instead of being short. They'll have a human resources, which now in today's day and age of everybody suing everybody is important because those liabilities add up and they can really have a huge negative impact on a lot of the revenues that towns pay for their students to get the education. And it's important for the students to have the opportunities that Penn Tucket used to be able to provide to them, and they haven't for many years. So those are, so those are the things that I took away from the, the meeting that we went to. So I know that the budget's not finalized for us, but I know the numbers are pretty, pretty solid to what you think that you have for us. And that would allow you to put together the override number that you have here. But I'm thinking we might want to take a five-minute recess before we delve into that and give an extra five minutes for Dan to actually show up. Because I know he's very opinionated and I wouldn't want to rob some of the people of the entertainment value that they find in these meetings.
So you want us to recess for five minutes and wait and see if Dan shows up?
Yep, I'm going to give him five more minutes. He said seven o'clock, so...
Is it worth reaching out to him to see if...
We'll make a motion to recess until seven eighteen.
He's coming?
Second, go ahead.
Turn the camera on. Turn the camera on.
From the high school to here? Alright.
What the heck? Dreaming.
Alright, thank you all for your patience. So I think, uh, we're ready for the presentation from the finance department on where we stand.
Finance board.
Finance board.
They're volunteers.
And, uh, maybe a little bit about why we're there.
So I don't have a presentation per se, but I can tell you that the finance board to, to date has met with all of the departments and reviewed all of the department budgets. The budgets consist of expenses that are really kept in line from last year. There were a few adjustments that were well documented and well justified, and I didn't see anything that was unreasonable or out of line. Um, we met with the school committee or the, the school administration and the school committee and the couple of public meetings that they had. And Rebecca talked already a little bit about the school's budget. I think that it's really important to state that the pressures on the operating budget of the school, to me, really are completely unrelated to the new school building. They don't have to do with the fact that there's a new building that was not anticipated, um, expense-wise. I think that it has to do with staffing. It has to do with the fact that the override did not pass last year. So we all saw the extensive cuts that were made at the school. And so the school is attempting to put that back together, um, as well as the fourteen percent in the out-of-district placements is, is like Jason said, four or five hundred thousand dollars. We have no control over that. We have no control over, um, you know, health insurance that goes up. That's true for the school and that's true for the town. And we feel all of these pressures year after year after year. And as much as it, it doesn't seem, when, when you say we haven't had an override since, did you say two thousand and seven? While accurate, it might not feel that way because we did have an override passed. That was to pay for the new school building and it was substantial and people feel it. And everybody feels pressures of inflation. Everybody feels pressures of expenses that are going up all the way around us. And, and that's real and it's understandable. And I know nobody wants to see taxes go up. None of us. We're residents of the town and, and we don't want to feel that. However, we are to a point where I believe we need to fund the school's budget. We need to fix what happened last year. We need to accept the costs that are handed to us. And really the bigger issue is, is with the state. The, the formula doesn't seem to work for our community. And that's not anything that we're gonna solve tonight in this room. But going forward, I feel that it's extremely unfair to keep squeezing our town's services along the way. And so the budget that we've reviewed and the override amount that we recommended puts the schools' funding where they've asked for it to be and also incorporates wage adjustments for the town employees, which was really part of a, a long, um, conversation that we've had. The first part of that was hiring a town administrator so that we had somebody to review and oversee a wage and classification study. Um, the second part of that was last year when we were fortunate enough to have ARPA funds. We funded a wage and classification study because we annually, when we meet with employees, we review budgets. There's wage concerns and they're valid wage concerns. But we didn't have a comprehensive study to address this. And so we had through the ARPA funds, the means to take care of that. We funded, the Board of Selectmen approved the funding of this wage and classification study. And now we want to implement it. And so part of the override includes an adjustment to bring our salaries to average, which is something that our neighboring communities have done through a wage and classification study and an implementation process, as well as, you know, the other thing that I feel about that is, well, two things I'll say. One is that we have a really great employee base and they all banded together to, you know, rearrange this town hall. A lot of them did it on their own time. The town hall is cleaned up. I see a lot of really good projects that come together. And, and you know, we, we want to encourage this team to continue contributing collaboratively and collectively. And the other thing that I'll say about that is we've also experienced how expensive employee turnover is. It's expensive. It's disruptive. It's not prudent, in my opinion. It's not where we want to, um, to go. And so I think to take a proactive state, a proactive stand to adjust some employees' wages, they're not out of line. They're not crazy. Their average mean salaries accord, according to a comprehensive third-party professional study. And I think that that's something to implement. The other thing, the last thing I'm going to say is we've heard for several years now, when we meet with our departments, we've heard from the Council on Aging Board, we want to retain employees. We've heard it loud and clear this year from the trustees of the library. Our primary focus this year is retaining and attracting and keeping our employees. We've heard it from the Board of Health, we need to pay our employees fairly. Um, and so it's, it's a conversation that we have been hearing and entertaining. And I think that we are now to the point that we can address it. And so our recommendations from the finance board incorporated those two items as, as one conversation. And, and we do plan to get together. We're trying to find a time that we can all get together now just to vote line item by line item, um, and approve the actual budget. But I don't expect the basis of the, I don't know, what's the total number, to, to change materially. And I think that the override amount that we recommended is appropriate. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, but if you want to just have your own conversation, however you want to go about it.
Did you want to add anything?
I'll just echo everything that Ruth said. I just think it's really hard every year. I've only been on the finance board three years and it's hard to have continual conversations that employees feel like they're underpaid. And when they're underpaid, they feel like they're not valued. And, um, we've heard it from Mark, right? And I, I, I kind of understand where he's coming from. I, I don't live it. I don't work in town. I mean, I'm on the board, but they don't pay me. So I, but I understand how we have such great employees and that they want to be paid a fair and livable wage. The expenses that go up and their pay only goes up two percent, it just doesn't work. They're getting paid less than what they were a year ago or two years ago, you know, what they're taking home. And that's hard. And that's hard to meet with that many departments and, and hear that and not feel some empathy and drive to want to do something. And I think that that's what our study did. And I think that's why the finance board feels so strongly about pushing that forward. That's it.
And you, you said you had something you wanted to say?
Oh, um, so, um, with respect to the school, I think the, the amount of additional chapter seventy, I think that was, was it sixty-eight thousand dollars or was it a ministry amount?
It was right around sixty-five-ish.
Let's just say for the town of Grohlland, that's the same for us from the state. We don't really get additional state funds every year to help us improve our town services or keep up with our town salaries. It basically comes from the tax base. Always has. Um, we're a small town and, um, we get by by hiring talented people who then go on and wear a lot of different hats is what seems to happen. We put them in one position, then we say, well, can you also do this? Can you also do that? And they do. And it's amazing. And, um, the audit report just highlighted that we collected more revenue than we forecasted and we spent less than we budgeted. That's a great team we have working here in Grohlland that can do that for the taxpayer year after year. Okay? Hold their spending in line, forecast what we're going to collect, come in with budgets. But it can't go on forever. So, um, in looking at Kentucky, I, um, asked them, I believe it was eighteen questions when all of a sudden done. And I won't go through all eighteen, but suffice it to say that they were totally transparent and provided me with every financial report that I asked to see. The stabilization, the circuit breaker, the financial reports, everything. And I've looked over that and I've looked at the state website and I, I understand the, the gymnastics to some degree of the state formula. And in collaborating with the school now and asking for the information they're looking at and combining it with the information I've been looking at, um, it seems to me there's a very clear pattern against regional school districts. And we were strongly encouraged thirty-some odd years ago to regionalize K through twelve. And we were promised the funding that would come with that. And it appears when we get sixty-eight thousand dollars and City of Newburyport pulls in, I forget what it was, a million something or whatever, as an increase, there's got to be something wrong with the formula. Um, so I'm not advocating yes or no on an override, but I'm saying that the, the financial basis for it exists, is real. It's not made up. It's not, um, fake or whatever you want to call it. And, um, I would hope that, uh, within our town offices, within our town administrative offices, we can provide the factual information so that people can understand it and make their own personal decision. But, uh, we have not had a general override since two thousand and seven. Our neighboring towns, Georgetown had general overrides in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twelve, two thousand nine. Merrimack had general overrides in two thousand seventeen, two thousand ten, two thousand nine, two thousand eight. Um, I could keep reading. And I'm not saying we have to keep up with the neighbors. But what I'm saying, there's a very realistic thing to think about that proposition two and a half was meant to prevent a runaway town meeting from overspending taxpayer dollars. And it does that very well to some degree. But it would be false to say that the intention was that no budget should ever go up more than two and a half percent. The state website, you can see it. It's all, um, open meeting information on every town's overrides and what they funded. They funded firefighters. They funded, um, libraries. They funded the salaries of people in their town hall. And yes, they funded their schools too. So we are not alone in what we're facing. And I think that the most important thing this year is to make sure that everybody receives the facts. Because if we're, we're going to have to ask for an override, we're going to ask the voters to consider it. I would like them to know what it's for. Okay? Is, is it, it's going to be for our employees, for the, for the salary study that we said we would do. And it's not giving everything. It's making a step. And to the question, well, what about next year? Will there be an override next year? Will there be? I can't answer that today because the state, to a large degree, concern, controls sixty percent of our budget, the schools. And I could tell you twenty-five, thirty years ago, chapter seventy was flowing in. And right now, it's not. We need to see appropriate increases in our chapter seventy money that are reflective of the ability of people in our district to pay. But we're going to have to work with the state to make those changes. They're not going to happen overnight, but it is possible that moving forward, we can get some consideration of that. I strongly believe in the squeaky wheel and I'm more than happy to be that squeaky wheel for our town. Some will say I'm good at it. And that's my statement. We'll stop there.
Mark?
I'm good right now.
You sure? I think it's important that you, uh, tell everybody their, their opinion.
I'll try not to get too worked up on this one, but, uh, no, um, obviously I worked for the town for ten years and, uh, I had to quit because just couldn't afford to live here. And I mean, I know it's kind of, the school's its own problem, but, uh, we got some talented employees. We keep losing them. Um, we give them just, you know, their fair rate. We could have them work together with other departments and it's gonna save our town money. I mean, we could, we got, we got the equipment. We got the guys. They could be doing upgrading water mains themselves, working, you know, watering highway. Um, that's, that's my side of it. Um, the school, kind of, it is what it is. I mean.
I think, I think the school is facing the same challenges we are.
Right. Yep.
I think that's huge.
So that's, that's pretty much it.
Alright, Dan.
I always have a, uh, seems to, uh, contrarian, uh, point of view on things. Um, I look at the school budget and I see, uh, poor management practices in the allocation of resources. I requested the, um, uh, classroom-sized data and the, uh, number of pupils in each classroom. And there were numerous classrooms over there at seven through twelve, um, with, um, very few children in the classrooms. Uh, this school has been, um, reluctant or just they simply don't want to, um, consolidate some of those classes and consolidate their resources. And they, um, they ask us to pay more. They ask, uh, seniors and others on fixed income to keep paying. Um, I, I, I've expressed my opinion. They have all the bells and whistles. Um, they, they constantly blame it on Beacon Hill, constantly, uh, blame, um, you know, underfunding on, uh, special ed or transportation. They have a structural defect in the way they, uh, conduct their business over there, in my opinion. And this, uh, problem will be here next year and the year after because they, they don't have the courage to address the structural defects in that school district. They need to consolidate resources. They could have some lecture halls. There's no excuse for having classrooms like advanced placement physics with three kids in them. Okay? Other districts like Masco, I, I was inquired about. They have extra credit and extra work for the kids in their regular physics classes. You don't need separate classrooms for every, every, um, specific, uh, um, you know, type of pupil. Okay? So until they address those issues, why should seniors and people on fixed income pay for it? We've offered them three percent, I believe, every year, which is more than the two and a half percent. That extra half a point digs into our ability to maintain services within this town, um, which, which, you know, is why we can't give, uh, pay raises. Because the school district consistently over the years takes priority over fire and police and everyone in the town hall there. Why are they special? Why can't they live within Prop two and a half? Well, we're expected to. And I appreciate everyone that works for, uh, um, in, in the public sector. Um, but bear in mind, okay, and, and, and I'm in private practice as CPA and I talk to a lot of people. And businesses have failed over the last three years in COVID. Okay? A lot of, and people in the private sector have gone backwards and fallen hard. I have clients that it shuttered their doors because they weren't essential workers in, in, in the, in the eyes of the governor. Okay? So I ask people to be patient and hopefully the economy will turn around and we'll recover from the, the pandemic. But count your blessings. I, I, I don't expect you in perpetuity to settle for, uh, less than what you're, uh, uh, deserve in terms of your work ethic. But bear in mind that other people have it a lot worse. And there are seniors that may have received a cost of living adjustment for social security last year for eight percent. But, you know, uh, uh, when the money supply increases forty percent over three years, they still went backwards. So we're getting pounded on inflation. COVID hurt us. And, and I don't see the school district willing to make any sacrifices for, for anyone other than themsel-, you know, they don't do it. They won't make a sacrifice. I think it's selfish. I think it's irresponsible. And I absolutely am vehemently opposed to a Prop two and a half override in this, in this time, in, in this economy and with other people failing. If you raise taxes on seniors, they may have lived here their whole lives. I'm not a townie, but I respect townies. If, if I grew up here and I had to put a for sale sign on my house because I'm paying for other kids to go to school and the basketball and all the bells and whistles over there, I, I'd be offended by that. Okay? I can always go to work. I'm gonna go back till one in the morning and I'm gonna do some more work. I can pay the four, five hundred dollars, but not everybody can. And, and we need to take care of the young, the old and the weak. And there's a lot of elderly people in this town that need another four hundred dollar bill like they need a hole in the head. It's gonna cut into their social security check. And, and I think that's just plain wrong when you got German, Latin. You get all the, all, they have a class on, you know, like, uh, uh, Intro to the Universe over there. I mean, I just, I, I'm astounded at all the electives they have over there. And they're not willing to free up those teachers so that they can focus on core curriculum like math and English and science. Okay? They just don't do it. And I don't believe the school committee has done everything they could do. Okay? I don't support their efforts. I'm actually disappointed in our school committee.
Alright, now do we?
Mr.?
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair. I, I just want to-
If it's indirect relation to what Dan said, I'd say no. Just because I don't want a lot of back and forth between board members or anybody else. Because he is entitled to his opinion. Whether I agree with it or not, it's irrelevant. He made his statement. I think we can move on and focus on the issue at hand.
Actually, Mr. Ch-, Mr. Chairman, pro temp or whatever, um, I have a copy of the information that Dan looked at. I've been to three school meetings. He's been to one. I work in the education-
Oh, come on, come on.
I went, I work in the education environment, and I, I watch the allocation of students across classes. And it'd be like, I don't know, the police chief handing me a schedule of his officers and me just trying, well, no, you don't need that person there then, you know, this is fine, this is fine. No, seriously, we're not supposed to campaign, I believe by law, on a ballot question, either for or against it. What we're supposed to do is determine if the ballot question has validity, if it's needed, if it's a question that should be asked of the public. So to have someone campaign against it on camera, I think is, is illegal, but go check.
Can I rebut that, Mr. Chair?
Check it out.
Out of line.
I think you have to take out a campaign paper.
Mr. Chair.
I, I, like I said, I don't want to go down this road.
She accused me of committing a crime, is what she just did. Let me respond to that as a licensed attorney in Massachusetts, and I'll be brief, please, please, please.
If you let Dan respond, I would ask that you let Ruth respond.
Fine.
You being accused of breaking the law, call State Ethics, Kathy, and, and apologize to me at the next meeting, all right?
Of course I will.
Yeah, all right? As an elected official, the people in this town have an absolute right to know what's in my head and how I think and what I advocate for. And I have an absolute right under the First Amendment to express my opinions. I can't make anybody vote in any particular way. All I am is an opinion up here like anyone else. And I have a one, absolute right to express my opinion and I, and can advocate for whether it's a, whether it's a, a, a dog park or funding the school, and it's not illegal. You're incompetent to say that, Kathy.
And if I find out that a Board of Selectmen member cannot use the Board of Selectmen meeting to campaign for or against, will I be competent?
What's campaigning? What is campaigning? Seriously?
Expressing your opinion without-
Oh, I can't have an opinion. So what am I doing here, just like rubber stamp? You're a school committee member, no, no, strike that, you're, you're a teachers' union member, okay? Should I rub a stamp for the school committee? I mean-
You forgot that I'm a woman too, but, um-
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, pull the gender card, that's classic liberalism right there, right there, folks.
Liberal too, there you go.
Yeah.
All right, Dan, Dan.
Should I leave now, we're going to vote on this, because you're wasting my time.
We have to get the number first, and Ruth has to speak, since I gave you and Kathy the courtesy of speaking and providing the entertainment for Paul, I hope you're watching.
So the point that I wanted to make is that the school has really worked hard this year to be open, transparent, and to give us information to make informed decisions. And the last meeting that we had, that the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Board were invited to with the school for the purpose of this conversation, Selectman McDonald wasn't there. And I just, my, my point is that I think it's unfortunate that you have such strong opinions that you share from that important seat that you sit in, yet the school isn't here to respond to that dialogue. And there was a forum for that to happen, and I wish that that could happen because there could be some levels of accuracies or inaccuracies that I think would be helpful to the greater conversation, so that people can make informed decisions. That's all. Thank you.
I mean, ultimately, it's, the bottom line is, we need the number that we're going to put forth to the ballot because it needs to be the people's decision. We have to make that clear as we move forward, simply because if we don't make it clear tonight, the school's going to get that money from us regardless. And so that's important that we do that. Even if the town says no, the school could potentially still get that number just because two, two out of the three towns only need to pass it. Which puts a little bit of pressure on the towns because they don't want to leave one town behind. Because that will financially bankrupt any town and put them pretty much into instant receivership. Because the number that we're being put forth to put on the ballot, I believe, is one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's more than we pay the fire department, the police department, the library, and half the staff here. And like I said early, that comes from years and years of cuts made on the school's behalf, made on the town's behalf, all to protect the taxpayer. So how does that wording have to be in the motion?
So you'll have to vote on the actual language of the ballot question, which I have in front of me if somebody wants to make the motion.
Kathy, since you're the closest.
Okay, I'll make a motion to place on the ballot the question. Shall the town of Groveland be allowed to assess an additional one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in real estate and personal property taxes for the purpose of paying the Penn Tucket Regional School District annual assessment for the fiscal year July first, twenty twenty-three? That's the full wording of it? And it's, oh, beginning July first, twenty twenty-three, and you respond yes or no.
That requires a second.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Yes, what's the number on there, specific amount?
One million, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Is it possible that it could be amended to give a average dollar cost increase to the average taxpayer? Do we have that data, and could that be amended and added there? Because people are going to ask the question, how much is it going to cost me?
Right, you want the average or you want the increase in the tax rate?
I think the, I think the average household increase.
So you can't put that on the ballot language itself, but I have the information available.
Can that be part of the packet in terms of the, the pros and cons? Is there going to be that, a favorable vote would be this, and an unfavorable vote would be that? Can that be part of the color commentary on, on the ballot?
Not on the ballot, but we can definitely add the information as to what the impact would be on the average single-family household. So it's just not on the ballot. We can put it on the website, we can talk about it here at the meeting, we can talk about it on any, any of those venues, but we can't put it on the actual ballot, physical ballot itself.
It has to go through town meeting also, is that a preliminary to this, or it goes straight to ballot?
It needs to go to both, so it needs to be a warrant article, and then it also needs to be voted on successfully at election.
Could that information be presented at town meeting?
Yes.
Okay, do we have that number?
Yes.
The average, and how many households do we have, like twenty-six hundred or something like that?
About, so I mean, the average impact, so our current tax rate is thirteen thirteen. If you add that, you'll add an additional ninety cents per the rate of one thousand for a new tax rate of fourteen dollars and three cents. The average assessed value of somebody's home is about five hundred and seventy-eight thousand. The current average tax bill is about seven thousand, five hundred and ninety. So you would be adding a total of five hundred and twenty, which would be a hundred and thirty per quarter and thirty-two dollars a month.
So the average is five hundred and twenty dollars a quarter to the average?
For the, for the year, and then a hundred and thirty for a quarter and thirty-two a month.
Broken that down, okay. Five twenty, so is it worth it?
Okay. All right. Can't be on there, can't be on there, thank you for- No worries. So, and, and, Mr. Chair?
I spoke with Rebecca earlier, just so that, to people know that we're approving this to go to the ballot so that the voters can decide, because if we fail to do that, then I think we kind of acquiesce in a way, and we agree to the school's assessment.
Yes.
Which, which I don't want to do, but we don't want to do it by default either. So it's up to the voters to come out at town meeting and, and, and the ballot and, and be heard.
Actually, that's important.
So it's not favorable action is what we're voting on, just put it on the ballot.
Yes, this is a vote for the ballot only, not favorable or unfavorable or any of the-
All right.
Correct, but I think it's important what Dan just raised, that, and this was something that I didn't know, and I think you, Rebecca, were in the conversation with Dr. Bartholomew, that if we were to take no action, that would be considered approval, and we would have to pay the full assessment. Right? Is that, that was my understanding, yeah, I didn't-
It's a default, if we don't act, then we agree to it, so it's, inaction is, is approval.
Is approval, correct, yes, okay.
All right, so, all in favor? Four in favor, one absent. All right, do we have any old or unfinished business?
Oh, Dan, do you have the evaluation?
Did you put together the evaluation for Rebecca?
No.
Okay. The town administrator's time?
I'd like a continuance on that.
No continuance, today was the deadline. There's no continuance, it's not tax season.
I, I don't have much, I, I just wanted to let you all know that we're still in the process of drafting the warrant. We had our initial review with Town Council on the initial warrant articles that we put forward. We received their comments, and we are now revising, and we are looking to submit again. And that, I was just going to ask if the board would consider closing the warrant at their next meeting for the deadline for submitting any additional articles.
I think that's reasonable. In terms of the Finance Board, I know last year when we went over the budget, we did it as a joint meeting together. I don't know how you guys feel about doing that this year. I'm very much in favor of that, still. I think it's productive.
Our challenge is finding a date when we have quorum of my board, of our board. And I'll also say for the record, that in the past, hasn't always been a, I don't feel that I personally have always been treated fairly from some members of the Board of Selectmen. So that causes me to pause a little bit in thinking that we can have as much of a productive and as much of an efficient budget review meeting with the combined two boards as with our board alone. That said, I'm well open to it, I think it's the best practice, I think it's ideal. But we would have to work to make it work, and I would like to be able to think that that could happen.
I know that I'm free unless it's snowing outside, so I can work with any date. What about, what about you in terms of a date? Are you a little bit more flexible than just waiting for our next meeting?
Oh, you mean to try and meet in between?
Yeah, so something that they can help put together and give them a little bit more flexibility.
I can give them some dates, is that what you're looking for?
Not right now, I just wanted a general idea that, yeah, you can, you're, you're going to be able to work with them and make something work.
Yes, I mean-
You too?
Trying to.
You too, Dan?
What's that?
Meet out of our norm with the Finance Department to go over the budget?
It's a lawyer answer, it depends.
If you're willing to work with them and, and we can try to work together to make something work.
No, the date, it can't be on April fifteenth or seventeenth, you know?
Understandable.
Because I get criticism a lot for not coming to meetings, but I'm working seven days a week, about eight hours a week, and some people don't work or have too much free time on their hands.
I do have too much free time on my hands for sure.
I believe that will be taken care of before, a week before the town meeting.
But I think it's important that we get together, so as long as you're open to, to help work with us.
Friday afternoon, Friday evening, we can work on a schedule, give me some lead time.
Good deal. Was there any other items not reasonably anticipated? I don't have anything listed here.
No, just to give the board a heads up, there, one of our Conservation Commission members is filing a disclosure for serving on two boards at the same time. He has filed a disclosure with the town clerk for his elected role and will be filing a disclosure with the Board of Selectmen for his appointed role to the Conservation Commission. He wanted to make sure that he was in compliance and is hoping to get the board to formally vote for his, to accept his disclosure, but is looking to also participate at their next meeting for the Conservation Commission, which I believe is before our next meeting. So if there would be any, we can take a formal vote at the next meeting, but is there any particular concerns with him serving in, in-
And who are we speaking of?
Terry Grimm.
Terry Grimm, because he's on the Water Commission.
Water and Sewer, yep.
Water and Sewer and Conservation. I thought he stepped down from the commission?
No.
From the, the Conservation?
No.
No? Does anybody object to that? We're typically short people all the way around. I know me and Mark are on multiple boards.
I don't have any problem. And all, if they have an issue, they can recuse themselves.
All right.
And I'll bring it before the board for a formal vote, but just in case they have another quorum issue, because I know they had to cancel their last Conservation Commission meeting because of a quorum issue, because he had not made that disclosure, but he has filed it, I have it in my office, it just wasn't in time to put it on the agenda.
I think we probably should vote it formally, so there's no conflict with the, the town clerk or anything like that. So if you would make a motion.
Not necessary.
No, you sure?
I'll put it on the agenda for the next one, I just wanted to bring it up and see if there was any issue.
All right. Sounds good. Selectmen time?
Sure, I see our Chief Gillen is here, and I've heard from a resident that I work with that we had some excitement here in Groveland last night. Well, last night, wasn't it? Seven Star Road? Oh, it was Friday night, okay, so over the weekend. So, how's it going? How, how's it going?
It's going great.
Oh, good, good to know, good to know. Good guys are winning?
That was pretty vague.
Okay, that's fine, I just, I heard from somebody at work and I was- Oops, sorry. No, that's all right, you can wait.
Anybody else?
Good. Yeah. Appreciate the, being here, I was late and, you know, I get caught shot at all the time for missing some time at various meetings, and I'll give the people of this town an explanation. The high school tonight had a banquet for the basketball teams. My son played varsity, appreciate the school district for their basketball program. But it was important for me to be there for myself and my son, my family, so I hope people understand that. It's tough to sit in this job and, you know, have a family and a full-time job. So I tell people I do whatever I can do, and when I miss meetings, I still do my homework. I, I don't play things loosey-goosey, I ask a lot of questions, I seem to irritate a lot of people. And I don't like the one-sided narrative, no matter what side you're on. So appreciate people for listening to my side of the story. And I hope you understand that if I have to miss some meetings, there's a legitimate reason for it. It's, I'm not just home watching TV, I hope people understand that, thank you.
All right, our next regurgitated scheduled meeting is going to be Monday, March twenty-seventh at six-thirty, but I hope that we were able to meet prior to that for the budget with the Finance Board. And I expect it will be productive. The more we do it every year, the better it'll be.
So we are trying to get a meeting together for next Wednesday, the twenty-second.
All right.
But I don't know our forum for that yet, so it is not official, but that's what we are trying to arrange in order to-
All right, well, like, like everybody here said, that we'll, we'll try to be flexible and work with you and the sooner that we can meet together and the further we can get along, and worst case-
Professional and respectful.
It's, it's always going to be a, it's always going to be a shoot, so I can't, definitely can't guarantee that because it's not going to be just me. But even if you can't and you still want to meet, we can always meet and still go over things and discuss things. Because we'll post a meeting on our behalf, and it'll be open, and people can come and attend and listen and talk. So I think it'd be good to move forward. So at that, I think we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at eight P M.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Meeting adjourned.